I didn't go there, but he went to Memphis for a wedding. My brother who got married. So he got married with the. So I was in this house. Yeah. And we did, you know, the house is pretty. I did.
She was the one.
She was step on it. It was personal level. Yeah.
She was the one I was trying to.
Cause my brother's wedding.
Oh, bro.
Yeah. My brother's wedding years ago. He said nothing. It's not. No. When you go now. They have the house. The water is like. And it's got like. Like a plane drive. Yeah. It's like gift shop. Oh. We did that. We did that. They have two planes still and then they. Oh, really? There's like his house. And the right hand. I don't know, but still. This was the day. Yes. No, because you know what? I don't know. I said that like so. Cousins. I would. He said. Yeah. They have like restaurants. Um, they have a restaurant. A one. One of your. Yeah. There was a museum. Kind of makes me think of this woman. Oh, but it's like a different every time. But every way you go, it's different. It's.
They need, uh.
But, um. Um, it's an hour. We didn't have. And I was going down that. And they are. But you can. It's interactive. So wherever you're at. It's totally. And you can pick my stairs. Yeah. I think that's. I don't.
Two days ago. She doesn't say.
I want to say.
She didn't. I was just. And I still. She's a girl. I wouldn't give her. Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I got you.
It's funny. Well.
Yes, he is.
And that.
I had a business. Uh, that I caught. And they keep doing. Who know what happened. You do. Two years. Yeah. Oh, doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah, I remember. You know, it's.
I can't.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't.
And I still. I still. Get babies out. She.
Yeah. My.
Yeah. Say that again.
But he also has a guy. That's. He works with me. Probably way more difficult than playing. But we here have a lot of. They make sure. He makes it so tight. So my shit. Hell, he has a.
Yeah. Well, start with. I'll. They'll see.
It was very cool. It was like. Not.
Yeah. That's what I come up to him about. And this. You can sit. You can sit.
Jammer. About my. Really. I'm like. Yeah. Yeah. They have.
I got. I don't know. She'll take this. Y'all she'll talk to this. This, this. This. They arrested me. They put me in jail. Eighteen hours. For stealing. Stepping on all. City hall. And the case got. Yeah. I just didn't counsel me. And then. So I said. Counsel.
Yeah.
They. They put me out. That's cause of the. They said. Yeah. So. But we did. So I.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess.
I don't.
Russia. Was. I know.
Yeah.
All. Wasn't. Inside.
So.
You thought. As I told. Yeah. Arrested.
Probably. But.
Yeah. Started getting. Sentation. To go. Time. You see that? Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah.
You.
Oh. Tell that girl.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to be telling them. You'll think for sure.
No. Oh, no. It's. What's it? Oh, yeah. Yeah. What's it? Well, it was. You know what? They sound like. I'm not. I'm not. I mean. I'm not. Yo, put this later. No one does. Nobody won't get on that, right? If you. You better shut up. It's a pretty. If you hear a coach. Get on that conversation. It's important. Drive. Right. Come on. Let me have a. Thank.
And that's funny.
Just.
What we have. Good.
Yep. But. But see. Here's. We don't have. It's a doctor person. Say. Now this. Or threatening. At times. And then. It's colored. And. Do that. Just let them. These howdy. Two. They go. You know what I'm saying? It's hard for the making of each. And looking for. To know. That's it. And until. Until we hit lawyers. That will come in and say, hey. Y'all don't go back. I don't have no problem. But. We're too short of this policy. Hey, I'm here. I don't say. You got me. I'm telling you. But if. It ain't no. No. Yeah. That's.
I think. Work. Work. Just. Just one second. Get just. A minute.
I'll take it. Just.
That work. That was my. That was my question.
They could use. They said. Rations. Ration. Issues. System. We.
I'm. Trying.
That's.
I'm.
Not about calling anymore.
She should get a laptop. I get the laptop. Or. Friday.
Friday.
Oh, because. I was doing.
Hey. Hey, you know we get ready to start. You know we get ready to start. Cass is starting, right?
Oh, he's gonna give me. Oh, you want.
We did. We did. That's. Well, yeah. Too many.
Y'all. Why?
Yeah. What? What? You got. Dennis. Yeah. This is what. Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah. The reader of the city. I'm just wondering how I got home the other day. Oh. I was trying to grab me too. Yeah. Too many there. Let me shoot like that. Oh. Yeah.
Can you sit down there? You know how it's gonna go.
Okay, okay. He need to. They worried about me. What you? Yeah, it's all. I got.
No. I'm so glad you said that. No, because I have it on our. Reminder. And I don't have it on. Oh, God, I'm so glad. I'm. I even here for.
So I.
But. Don't have. Oh, you did in the hall again.
Well, the process. She has what she did. Said she. In the driving place.
He's. You're. How.
When I said. Do you? Um. Do you have? You stop. You're not approaching. In there. I just. Yeah. So. And then. So. Any storm. So. Well, not talking to me that way.
Here. Here.
You got. So she. My. She. Yeah. Well, you think. She's supposed to. She put the order. For letting them out. Cause I had sent. She. Day nine. Right. You know what I'm saying? They. They gotta come out. Yeah. They. They got. The whole. Yeah. Waterline. So. You. Right. Yeah. It's not that I thought maybe it was probably she out here.
For. State.
Well, that's. Like I said. Right. Oh. Another day.
Another day. We did make it.
Like I told my sister, I. Take. You. Yeah. Chair. He'd like to have a. Across. Uh. I began. Yeah. No, much as being across the. Yeah. Just ask. Oh, baby. No. No, I'll do that. Just what I told you. I think. There's a. I'm. We. We have one. It's. See. You. I'm. Yeah. He's like. Oh, wait. The. The.
We are.
Right. Mr. Mitch. Mr. Moore. She gonna say. That name, Mr. Moore. Come on. You got your money. Pussies. Break, Mr. Moore tonight? You got. Go. There. You. Is that why?
Man.
Oh. He. It's. They even. I tell. With the board. Well, here. And. Yeah. All that. That's. My. Thank God. I'm. 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 I don't. They. Okay. They. They. Yeah. What? What's up, boss? Good. It's. I. Where I got. That's. That's. Over. I'm. You're.
Stand by your.
Thank God.
I'm. I'm. I. I will call. I.
Test. Test. Testing. Testing.
Hello. Thanks. Hey. I. Yeah. Nice.
After. It's. Be.
I. Oh. I. Yeah. Exactly. Thank.
He took my seat. She on her. I'm not. I think the first. That's ours. They probably leave the arts for us. Well. Oh. Put them chips down. Oh. I. I am not buying you. Five. Inside.
Oh, my gosh.
It was funny. I was in.
Ain't.
And, um. Castle's all great. And I hear. Twin. Debbie.
No.
Turn around. What you eat? Times to. I'm like. Do what I'm. Being like. Sometimes. Who want to wear? Everybody. Make it back. We'll see. Everybody else can make you back.
Oh. My friend. They said.
Oh. Alright.
You're supposed to.
Okay.
I don't know. She said. I don't. Yeah. Yes. Unless. Or. But. I. Money. The. The general. Expiring. This. You know. You know. There is no. That's. What they. What is the general.
Hey, don't worry.
The general.
Hey. Hey.
Sure. That's you. About that. You sure. Kind of.
I had to do with my mother. She comes first.
Oh, okay. That's what. Alright.
You know they. Let me sing in the choir. Please. Sing.
You done play the radio.
choir.
Hey, don't even let me on praise team. No, I do want to say this to you. Because I called you the other day. Y'all know we have a tumultuous relationship.
Oh.
We do. And so I called him. I'm having a little birthday. And I said, hey. Um. I've had talking with you. For days. And I said. Have you. Catherine. Say. Mary. King. On today. I did. Cause y'all. Done. And. And so. I called my sister. To tell her. I said, I cannot. But to get her back. She. So. She can't get. He beat me down. He's out there. And then. He was. So. He was so. She. It was. So. Business. I. I've never seen. The. I was.
Oh, my God. The number one star. Candace. Check.
So.
Not around you. Unless your mom.
No. He's such a nice man. Oh, my God. I. Now my mom's thinking like.
She's been trying to.
I. Sorry.
Don't tell us.
Already did it. Unlock. Couple world doors now. Yeah. It's all. Yes, we. We got a point. We. That's. That's. I don't. I'm sorry.
Oh, my. Raspberry. Uh. Oh, my. Queen. Oh, strawberry. Raspberry. What?
No. He sit quietly.
Look at. That stomach. Oh. Trying to. Oh, my God.
Oh, yeah.
Here they come. Oh, damn. You put it down.
That's.
Pick it up. That was.
What's up? I know. Like. Yeah. When you. You were. Called it off. Fuck.
I'm gonna have to go around. Maybe in a. From. Get that.
I know. Just. The.
Okay. We should. Oh, that. Got fired. Yeah. The word is. Uh-oh. I don't say nothing. I just want to. Do it. We keep. Sure. You love. Who they are. I. Mm.
I.
Mm. All that. Just. So.
Well, Brooke. Come back.
Hi. Don't you worry. My step.
Yes, dear.
That's. Starting. We. It's.
Avoid. Yeah, that's why. Yeah, that's right. This meeting started at five. I had nothing done yet by five. She told me, I want us to be on time by nine a.m. I'm brushing, your pads are down like I'm a little.
And then start. It's, um, yeah, that's.
What I'm talking about, you sure? Don't think, you must quit. And the words of Wu-Jack, they're the lawyer.
The time is now five ten, the special city council meeting is now being called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jared is not in. You have five members present.
All right, we have five members present, so now it's time for the pleasure of allegiance. Ms. Priestley, would you mind leading us in the pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now it's time for the prayer of blessing, but before we do that, we would like to honor anyone that may have transitioned. So do we have anyone that we would like to honor today? All right, so seeing that we have no one, we will go into the prayer of the blessing. And so we will ask Councilwoman Tanya Burns, would you lead us in the prayer of the blessing?
Madam Chair, I decline, I'm kind of not, we don't need more, I decline. Trying to get organized, thank you.
All right, so we will ask Mrs. Mashat if she will lead us in the prayer of the blessing.
If all minds are clear, Heavenly Father God, we come to you now just first and foremost thanking you for this day and time. Thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, and your favor. We thank you that you allowed us all to get here safely. We thank you for safe travels back to our respective places. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to uplift the residents of Flint. We thank you for the opportunity to hear one another. We ask that this meeting would go in a peaceful manner. It is in your son Jesus' name we pray, amen.
The reading of this disorderly person city code subsection. Any person that disrupts this meeting will be in violation of the Flint City Code Section thirty-one-ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from meetings. So now it's time for public comment. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
And Mr. Mitchell, before you begin, we'd like to kindly remind all attendees, please silence your phones so they will not disrupt the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
I'm R.L. Mitchell. And I'm here to address the city for acting up when Tanya Burns was effing the other day. And, and, uh, and thank God for the sack, Candace Wu-Sack, so those who pray together stay together. So that's mean we gonna have a, a full council meeting tonight for Mr. Moore can come back with the evidence to take care of the budget of Flint. Using our stimulant money and trying to get away with it, but he's not gonna get away with it. Thanks to Ed Teller, he didn't have a chance to speak up for Mr. Moore. Cause he turned around and ran out the room just like the, the guy was talking to fifth council lady. And left his sweet wife over there and gave everybody in here the bird, two birds at one time. The dude with the white beard, the redneck fellow, or whatever. Oh, I got away with that. And thank God for Tarzan, I mean, the eighth ward made, ninth ward made it back through the streets with his electric car. With no situation, everybody made it back. Cause everybody was concerned about me leaving the council meeting last week and they was, they was wondering, but I'm here now. Just like Martin Luther King, when the woman come up in his face and he felt a pinch in his chest. And then she had stabbed him with some scissors. And the little, a little girl wrote him a letter, another girl of another color. I'm glad you didn't sneeze, cause if you would've sneezed, he would've died. I remember when I seen that on television when I was a little teenager, wow! That woman, that woman, that's what almost, she stopped the whole, people from Mississippi and Alabama and all over the bridge. That little girl just said that. I can understand, but, but the ward two lady talking about, the boundary for, what's the name of it? That school that turned into a church. I, I went over there the other day hoping to see her in there, but I met a preacher with suspenders on. Another, a man of another color. I'm looking to see up, and I felt like I was out of place again, but they offered me, he said, are you hungry, sir? I said, yeah. And he had one of the women's of color that fixed me a big plate and spilled this food and I went over behind that swamp land. Sat on the picnic table, and I was gonna light a match and start my food up, warming up a little bit. And the wind blew, blew a little spark on the ground and the whole, almost started stuff on fire. He was headed over to towards the church. I hope it didn't get there, cause it was a gas tank, it blew the whole church up. Some, I mean, I don't know what that was. The whole neighborhood, people's in, okay, I keep coming back.
All right, next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
Good afternoon, Ms. Gurley. Uh, Gurley, right? All right. Uh, I'm hearing something that, uh, some people of some people got from Charlie in H.R. Uh, it's something about Michigan tribunal, fraud, taxes, something like that. Have you heard anything about that? Because I don't wanna put information out there that I don't have full, uh, information or proof or anything like that. And I wanna, you know, FOIA this information. So do you have something with some information about fraud, forgery, tax, Michigan tribunal that you supposed to be investigating? Uh, I'll get with you later to, uh, find out, because, uh, that's something serious, uh, something like that going on. Uh, I watched YouTube the other day. Uh, I've been putting in grants, for grants, for a lot of different things. And majority of the time, you put in your proposal for grant, RFP, or whatever the case may be. You never give money and then say the people are coming after you give them money, we're gonna figure everything out. I would not vote on that. Uh, Ms., 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 uh, Councilwoman Lewis, you was screaming about kids and all this. And how you wanna help the North Side. But you the same person along with the other three that voted down Saint Mark's who feed the whole city. You the same person that voted down Haskell Powell. But you talk about you wanna help the North Side. You are a hypocrite. And then see you on video calling somebody the B-word. Now if a man calls you the B-word, you'll start screaming, he's a male chauvinist. But it's not cool to call a man a B. And then try to say men are attacking you when you out here calling them that. Ms., Ms., Ms. Candace, you talk a good game, but you sat up here and allowed her to attack Dennis all that time. Those was personal attacks, what he drive, where he live, matches, all this and that. You didn't have, you didn't have one thing to say. I would've told her the same thing. I stand with you, Mr. Pfeiffer, uh, for what you said. And, and, and I've been wanting to say it a long time, man. But it's y'all four that gives Flint a bad name and a bad look. And Cathedral of Faith, teaching faith, which you don't have, is a mixture of state and government.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Rodney Thomas. Rodney Thomas. The next speaker is James Moore.
James Moore added the second ward, just would like to say winter has passed and spring is quickly approaching. Once this wind stop blowing and being so cold, hopefully so, this council can get something done this year. I hear the budget is coming in up. I hope that's a good thing and we can get that at least settled and then we can do some backtracking on things that have been here all winter. Standing in our way and stuff we just was not able to get done. Thank you, have a good night.
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Tanya Jones.
Are you ready? Okay, I'm Tanya Jones, I'm the Michael Edwards' mother. I'm here in regards to, I watch you guys on YouTube or Facebook or whatever. And y'all have met, y'all did grants or whatever for Amalam services or whatever, so I'm trying to do a medical pickup on my son. So every time I call Flint Police or call the Amalams, they're not available. My son is the opian, whatever law, whatever they got going on, whatever crisis is going on, whatever, it's real. So it could hit anybody, family in here, and Ms. Candace, you know my son personally, from church. So I'm trying to have, all, all I'm doing, I'm a mother, I'm here pleading for my son. And City of Flint, only thing, only where I went wrong was not moving my kids out of Flint, Michigan. I moved them out of Flint and moved them into Flint Township, thought they was gonna be okay. But no, they're not okay, everything I kept them away from, they back, okay? So I done called, I done called, I called time and time again to Flint Police, I done called for medical, guess what? Out here go the pickup, Judge Barky, guess what? They don't get picked up. All I'm trying to do is save my son, and guess what? Whatever these grants y'all have is not going through. All I am, I'm a parent. At the end of the day, my kids are not babies, but they're my babies. Thirty-one, thirty, and thirty-four. And guess what? The City of Flint is not fucking helping me. This is where I'm at with it. So I'm coming to the, this council meeting, whatever they got going on, it's not no help. It's not no help. Whatever grants y'all doing, pass some money, here, there, whatever, it's not available, it's not working. And I'm trying to save my son, that's all I'm trying to do. But guess what? Eric Mays was there for me, Vera Rising was there for me, Ken Scott was there for me, my grandmother was over there, United Women for Rights was there for me. I can call Tanya Burns and just she's there for me. But guess what? If you call the Flint Police, where they at? So I wanna put it on record, it ain't gonna make a difference, but I'm a mother and I'm not gonna quit fighting. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Uh, I believe that's the last speaker. I think Ms. Jones filled out two slips, so that's the last speaker.
Okay, thank you. So now it's time for council response. Do you have any council members that would like to respond?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I, I understand, first I thank everyone who's here. Um, hopefully today will be a more civil, a civil day that we can focus on the business. And hopefully it'll be a short meeting. Um, to Ms. Jones who's out there in the hall, um, I have personally experienced, and it was not my child, but another mother who could not get help to get her child picked up. And it was so difficult. Um, she, I know she's out there. There, we have opioid money, but we do not have a opioid plan. And we have a problem. And one of the biggest problems even in the eighth ward is, um, it's Fenton Road, but they call it Fentanyl Road. Because there's so much drug abuse that's over there, drug trafficking, women missing, and women dead. And so, um, we have a community that we gotta really start focusing on the issues. Because the people are getting left behind, and that's not what we're supposed to be doing. Madam Chair, I'm done.
Anyone else for a council response?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Mashat.
So I, I certainly sympathize with the parent that just came up here and spoke. Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with her child or who she may be talking about. Maybe if I saw them, but I will gladly help her with whatever her concern is. I know she said that our council colleague in the sixth ward was helping her, so I'm not sure of why the help has not been helpful. But I can find out what's going on. Um, and then I think there was someone who came up and commented that they watched the meeting the other day. And I, I just think we have to be careful with revisionist history. And we have to be careful with making sure that simply because we have a bias against someone, that we don't act like certain behavior is not detrimental to the council as a whole. Um, not sure what part of the video they came in on or any of that nature, but a-again, I, I think that when people come up here and they benefit from us being divided because it's content for them, we just have to watch you speaking. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else for council response?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Priestley.
Listening to the mother, I was unclear as to what exactly her problem is. It sounds like she might have a court order for the police to pick her up, and, pick her son up. And something to, and maybe he's on drugs, I don't know. But I, if you come before us, I would ask you to be more clear so that we can help you. We have an un- Right, right, we can't leave and go and check on her, but I really would like to know what we can do to help her with her problem. As a, I've had several family members with drug abuse problems. And, um, one just recently got off the streets and is clean now for three months, so we're thankful for that. But I've lived through the torment of having family members on the street, living with drug abuse problems. So if I can help this person in any way, I'd like her to contact me. Thank you.
Madam Chair, um, I wanna grab her information before she gets on the elevator, but I don't want us to lose quorum. I don't, I don't know how we- I know, but I wanna talk to her myself because I don't wanna be insulting.
That, that's fine, but Ms. Burns, she has the information, so maybe she can share it with you? E-either way, it doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, um, anyone else? Um, Ms. Hall, would you please stop yelling now? I shouldn't hear you speaking up here. Okay, well, talking out, I hear you up here, thank you. That's your warning, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing as there's no one else, I'll go ahead and be the last to speak. Um, grateful to be, um, a speaker today at, at Doyle Writer, or was a guest reader. They invited the members from the council and the city officials to come and read during their literacy day. And so this was a great time to interact with scholars, celebrate literacy, and just a chance to engage with our younger residents. And so as a token, we received a gold trophy as well as a gold pen. So, um, I definitely appreciate these opportunities to continue to engage with the residents. And we're looking forward to more opportunities to engage, and we're looking forward to doing more great things in the City of Flint. And so, um, with that being said, we will go on to our resolutions. Seeing that this is, we have two resolutions, but we do not have the consent agenda. So I guess we'll do it resolution by resolution. So we are on resolution two-five-zero-zero-nine-seven, what's the pleasure of the body?
Through the chair.
Madam Chair.
Through the chair.
Um, it, was that you, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Um, either, I just wanted to say it doesn't have to be noted on there, you can still vote on a consent agenda. So you still have that ability, if that's your pleasure.
Say that one more.
I'm saying even though it isn't noted on the agenda, you can still make a motion to vote on a consent agenda if that's the council's pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Also, through the chair.
Did you just say something else, Madam Clerk?
I did, Councilwoman Lewis, Tanya Gurley, you've lost quorum.
Okay, well, council, well, she's still, she's still within the, um, within the chambers.
Point of order.
What is your point?
The city attorney stated we lost quorum and we did. I mean, we, we lost quorum, it's very clear. So this meeting is gonna have to be adjourned.
This meeting is not, so we will remain at ease until quorum is established.
I'm not gonna break the rules, cause I'm, I'm getting ready, you making up the rules. It clearly states you're not taking-
Ms., Ms., Ms. Burns.
Point of order.
Ms. Burns.
Point of order.
Ms. Burns, you did not have the floor, you were not recognized to have the floor.
You're not even into the, in, into the meeting yet.
We are into the meeting, Ms. Burns.
Okay, I hear now why I'm not doing this.
Ms. Burns, again, all right, that is fine, you may, you may leave the meeting, that is fine, that is fine. Ms. Burns.
Point of order.
What is your point?
Can we wait for Ms. Gurley to research it, please?
Pardon?
Can we wait for Ms. Gurley to research it? To research it.
That, that's fine. Yeah, I'm, I'm clear there, it's in Roberts' rules, and we've done this several times, so it's fine, we can wait. But if she leaves, then we will lose quorum, so we just end the meeting, so she's looking for reason to go.
President, I have, I do stand corrected, as long as under five point six. Once a quorum has convened, quorum is not lost as long as sufficient numbers are present in the council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, uh, we will wait for Councilwoman Mashat. Because we said the council body wanna stand at ease, and we invite Councilwoman Burns to return to her seat, hearing that we did not lose quorum, and that we still can proceed with our meeting. So, um, like Councilwoman Burns is deciding to leave, so we can't handle the business, so. We still have quorum, we still have two members in the back of the chambers. All right, so Councilwoman Burns has decided to leave the meeting after hearing that the attorney said that we did not lose quorum. So therefore, this special meeting is adjourned at five-thirty-three. And the next meeting will be budget hearings chaired by Ms. Priestley, the finance chair.
And for the audience, this is considered a separate meeting, so you will fill out, need to fill out speaker slips? Yep, so you'll just need to fill out another speaker slip for this meeting, this is the second meeting for the day.
Huh? She's still in the building.
Brilliant. I don't know how to do that. Thank you, because I've stood here and done that for thirty more minutes. Oh, okay, so let me move this one out of here. Soon as Davina's ready. Huh? I like your glasses a little bit. Do you? Oh. I've had these a while, but you just tie them around there often. I wear them for music. They're in my music bag. Whenever you're ready, Davina. Huh? Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm a cuisinier. Okay. The time is five forty-six, and I hereby call this special council meeting for budget to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Present.
Ms. Mashat?
Present.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jarrett is not in. You have five members present?
We have five members present. Mr. Pfeiffer, will you do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Hicks has agreed to give the blessing.
Point of order. I'm just asking, this was, the agenda was posted for special city council meetings.
It's on the agenda.
No, no, I get that, but how are you chair?
Because it's finance. Because it's budget.
Since when?
Yeah, we did, it's budget, that's why.
Okay, I mean-
Okay. Go ahead, Pastor Hicks.
Let us bow. Most holy and righteous God our Father, we come now to first say thank you for all of your many foundations and blessings. Father, I ask you to bless this time that we have adjourned, uh, come together, Father God, that wisdom, knowledge, and respect will prevail. Father God, that things can be dealt with, cleared, and agreed upon in a timely fashion with the utmost respect, one for the other. As you bless now, oh, Father God, that your people who are called by your name, as we will humble ourselves unto your guiding hand, direct us as we come together to take care of the business at hand. In Jesus' name, Father, we pray, and we say amen.
Amen. We do have a, a sort, reading of disorderly persons subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. I have an agenda change, and that is addition of the presentation of the budget for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, and this, this will be before the public hearing. It's all yours. Thank you.
But thank you.
Which point?
Okay, I make the motion. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett is not in. Vote is five yes, zero no.
The vote is five yes, zero no. That agenda change passes now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening to council members, and thank you for sharing this time with us. This is another blessed moment before us. Today, you know, today we introduce our sixth consecutive balanced budget, and this is the strongest budget of the six that we have introduced. We have moved from crisis to recovery inside the city of Flint, and this budget gives us a good opportunity to continue to move the community forward. But we definitely have to move together in a level of harmony and unity for this community. Uh, and so, with that, we're going to get started with this budget presentation, and then we'll go over some opportunities when our budget reviews and our budget hearings to be able to go with a deeper dive to see if we can further perfect this outstanding and strong budget of the city of Flint. Review and overview. One of the things that people don't understand, and we have to be able to educate them up, and I know all of you do, but the way that we finance our community is definitely by some definitely streams of revenue that comes in every year. Some of those revenue streams that support our municipality and the services therein is property taxes, income taxes, state revenue sharing, grants, and philanthropic giving. Those are the foundations and the pillars of which our finances are set up on and structured on. The city of Flint is one of thirty-three units of government inside of Genesee County. Being the largest unit of government with the most population here in the county, we have a, a great responsibility to provide a service for residents that's increasing the level of quality of life for them and their family to be here. This is some of the taxable value here inside the city of Flint, and these are slides when we talk, take a look at the taxable value and what is going on, the tax yield, and also parcel breakdowns. If you look at the, the pie chart to your left, and also to the pie chart to your right, it breaks down this community, uh, in the parcels as it relates to residential, personal, commercial, and industrial. And also, this is a great year. We haven't had, since two thousand and eleven, one billion dollars of taxable value in our city. This year, we eclipsed that. That really shows the level of growth and understanding that this community is on the rise, and we're generating revenue. Now, when we talk about the level of increases in our city, the Headley Amendment from the state of Michigan caps our taxes. So, therefore, we can, we are capped at a level of taxes but not taxable value in our city. Let me move this back a little bit. The microphone's pretty hot. But definitely, we are, these are signs, indications that we are rising, and this is a great, great movement for our city and our residents therein. Some of the taxes in properties inside our city that we still have to provide a high level of service for churches, governmental entities, hospitals, nonprofits, and schools, and also philanthropic organizations. Though they are very vital instruments inside of our community, they do not pay property taxes or pay into the general bucket of these things. Now, in the hospitals, we have a pilot, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. These are some of the things that we structure in our system to make sure that everybody puts a little bit into the system. But churches, government, hospitals, and schools, they still do not provide a level of revenue for the city of Flint, but they do provide a lot in our social structure. Strategic budgeting and goals for our city. A budget is nothing more than a snapshot of the priorities in which we all hear from. Being one of the ten elected officials in this community, we hear from our constituents at the low, high level of what the priorities are, and these are what the priorities that they have set out and set forth. Blight elimination, infrastructure development, water stabilization, economic development, and safety. These five pillars that I just said are the prioritizations that we put forth in this two thousand and twenty-six strong budget. And we put a lot of resources into those categories, and some of these things came by way of recommendations from you, the council members, by way of recommendation from your constituents in which we all serve. Budget key point. Community impact and services. Key investments and priorities. Pension systems and stabilization, revenues and expenditures, and strategic overview. As I said, as Barack Obama said as well, a budget is nothing more than a series of numbers on a page that embodies our values. And here in the city of Flint, we have a lot of great values, and residents deserve a lot of great services, and this budget, this very strong two thousand and twenty-six budget recognizes those priorities. Budget snapshot. General fund revenues totaled sixty-four million dollars. Also, general fund expenditures totaled sixty-eight million dollars. One of the things, when I sat in that seat as a councilperson for about, about better part of a decade, I understood what administrations used to do in those, uh, in those budget presentations. Sometimes they overproject it with the- Sometimes they overproject it with the general fund revenues and underproject it in the revenue expenditures. We played it very, very tight. The sixty-four million dollars on which you see are the dollars that we had in hand and in pocket. Since that time, we have more revenues based upon the grant applications and the grant opportunities that we had as a city of Flint with our federal government, state government, and also our philanthropic community, and those dollars are still rolling in, so our general fund revenues is a little bit more, uh, than sixty-four million dollars, and also our general fund expenditures is a very robust look at what we have in obligations. Many of you are gonna be having dialogues with our budget hearings, and we're gonna be talking about some of the things that have expired, that the debts that we have in front of us. One of these debts is a million dollars that we have with the sixty-seventh fifth edition of the court system, which a contract was signed by the emergency manager. The emergency manager signed its position, a million dollars to be, be able to be paid to the court system with Genesee County. That MOU is up of September of this year. We done, and are obligated to put that forward this year. We put it in the budget as far as one of our expenditures, in good faith, as we negotiate with the county, but definitely we have to do so as a, as a good body, and having good fruitful dialogue is very important. Our court systems, our judicial system is very important to the city of Flint and also the county. So we looked at it, but we definitely, these things are not obligated, uh, in contract, but we put it as good faith in our expenditure, but that is a million dollars there. No increase to our military rate. As I talked about the Headley Amendment, we're capped at a certain level with our military rates, so military rates are not going up inside the city of Flint, but it's a combination and a formula based upon the value of your property, but you are capped at a certain level here in city of Flint. Military rates are not going up, but definitely what is going up inside the city of Flint is about the personnel to provide a high level of service for residents of this great community. Right now, we're gonna be looking at, in this two thousand and twenty-six budget, taking our staffing levels to six hundred and forty-eight people. That means we can provide a high level of service, uh, whether it's in the water, street maintenance, uh, services for residents, police and fire, uh, our residents deserve the best, and we're moving that into this budget, and in this great budget, we're providing a high level of service to be able to support the needs of our community. And we look at general fund revenues, and we're looking at some of the other places that we're generating dollars and cents. One of the things I wanna highlight in this budget is this, is that we started about three years ago with the income tax collection inside the city of Flint at a more robust level. Income tax collection inside the city of Flint has always been something here. If you live and work inside the city of Flint, income tax is one percent for those individuals who live and work here. If they work here in the city of Flint and live outside of the city of Flint, the income tax collection is point five. Now, but it's been very difficult for the city of Flint to be able to make these individuals, uh, pay income tax in, in many aspects. During the occupation of the emergency managers, they deconstructed our city in many departments. That department that we outsourced it to, we pay about six hundred thousand dollars a year when they give us one personnel to be able to go out to try to collect income tax revenue, and that's unrealized dollars to us, but it's dollars duly owed to this community. We've negotiated terms with the state of Michigan, and through our lobbying efforts and our state legislators, uh, we've been able to come to an agreement with the state of Michigan that they will take on the obligation of collecting our income tax. Earlier this year, uh, they did a snapshot of it, and so we looked at about maybe six thousand entities that have not paid income tax into the city of Flint that's duly owed. With that level of revenue, it's probably another two to three million dollars on the table that's owed to the city of Flint that we've never been able to capture. This model has been done in the city of Detroit, and they've been able to generate additional revenue that's been owed to that community, and we have tied into this, and we will now move forward, uh, with this new negotiated term and agreement with the state of Michigan for them to be able to assist us in collecting the income tax that is duly owed to this community, and that is one revenue stream that's gonna be coming in, and it's gonna be a blessing to this community, uh, nothing more or nothing less than a blessing. Marijuana tax revenue, marijuana is the biggest deal that, uh, Michigan has seen with the legalization of recreational marijuana use. We have now perfected and, and produced a good licensing opportunities for those entities that wanna come into the city of Flint to be able to do this, we generate additional revenue in that space. Uh, this year's revenue sharing from just that is a little bit more than a half a million dollars, probably six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, to our operation, and also to the business sector. Also, as these new businesses come, not only are they paying into a revenue share, but also they're paying taxes into our overall base that goes toward that, that new, uh, total of a number, more than one billion dollars of taxable revenue. Taking obsolete, desolate property, now re-zoned to be able to facilitate this new business model, we're generating new property taxes and new income from that level of thinking. This is about an operational move, uh, versus a financial move, but definitely we are benefiting. I'm very proud to say with this two thousand and twenty-six budget, over the last six years, we have not laid off any workers, uh, we've just been able to increase salaries for those workers, and we continue to engage in our rate study, wage study, getting individuals, um, the dollars and cents for their talent and skills that they deserve. General fund, fund expen, uh, expenses, these are some of the expenses that we have, and some of the largest expenses that we have is our public safety areas, our police and fire, which is our largest group of individuals and employees inside the city of Flint. We've been able to enhance the level of service and also be able to provide a better wage for those individuals. Our recruitment policies were antiquated. In two thousand and seven, the standard was set for our recruits, how much we paid them. In two thousand and twenty-two, I doubled that, I increased it by fifty percent so we can get a better pool of talent to be able to recruit more police and fire officers. So we took it from a standard that was antiquated back from two thousand and seven, moved it up in two thousand and twenty-two, and now we can recruit and be able to support those individuals in those noble careers in police and fire as they support residents inside the city of Flint. Projects in health and human services, finance and general government operations. We have to be able to attract the best, to be able to provide the best for our residents in this great community. Even though they counted Flint out many years ago, as you guys know this, when we work together, we are powerful, we are powerful. And so those general fund expenditures in those categories, in that pie chart as you take a look at, that's where we look at. And we take a look at our public safety areas, and we talk about police, we have right now currently in this new budget, two thousand and twenty-six strong budget, one hundred and sixty-two police personnel. We have civilian personnel that operates inside of those areas as well, to be, to be able to provide support services for law enforcement officers as they go out and engage in, in the part, uh, in the product of providing safe streets for our families and our friends and our neighbors. We have a hundred and sixteen sworn officers. Now, over the last six years or so, we've hired probably more than ninety officers to keep up with the pace of retirement, uh, and, um, people transitioning out to other law enforcement agencies. We've been able to recruit through the good view of making sure we provide a level of bonuses, assignments bonuses, and thank you council for passing that, uh, that has been proven to be very effective, and also wage increases for those law enforcement officers. Uh, so we have a hundred and sixteen sworn officers, new contracts, wage increase. We also now have a cold case unit, which is by far the best in the state of Michigan. We have, uh, we, we call it, um, we have workshops here, uh, sat fire, I will, the name slipped me for a moment, but satire, all the cold cases, rape kits, we now are able to go back in the cold case to resolve these cases and to bring these people to justice. They won't just be able to get away and think that it's over. We're now hunting these individuals down, and they have a hundred percent, uh, cold case rate as they go into it with our project that's been developed here in the city of Flint, and now we're guiding the rest of the station, state of Michigan. Our gun bounty project, right? When we first came here in two thousand and nineteen, the city of Flint participated in a gun sale. Every gun that was taken off the streets, every officer that risked their life to get the guns out of those people that were using these guns for nefarious activities and taking them off the street was going back to auction. I, for one, took it personal. De facto, we are not a gun, a dealer. Municipalities, villages, and townships should not be engaged in gun sales. We have gun dealers, gun stores that can also produce that, but definitely, these guns should not be repopulated back into operation. When I say I take it personally, the number one cause of death in America now for black men is gun violence. That is a level of genocide and a level of sickness. It was declared a mental health issue, a public health issue by, by then-President Joe Biden. I believe in that, but definitely we were never, ever, uh, or should be involved in gun sales. Every gun that comes to this community that we take off the street and take out of the hands of those individuals who do not possess them legally or would use them to harm people should be destroyed. Um, so gun bounty programs have been going very well, uh, those projects ran by our chief of police, Terrence Green, uh, and his team, you know, Captain Urquhart, and also, uh, others, uh, Deputy Chief Jeff Urquhart, not Urquhart, Ancliff, I'm sorry, he's gonna tease me about that later, but definitely, uh, they've been doing fantastic getting guns off the street, and also now we're starting to receive the benefit of that because our rates of violent crime is down, um, as it relates to gun violence. Partnerships that we always must engage in, I talk about prayer planning and partnership, looking for our partnerships, and those assets that's been sent here from the state of Michigan, Michigan Police Officers, opioid task force, and adding new additional programs to be able to come up with ways to reduce crime and making our streets safer, that is all reflected in this very, very strong two thousand and twenty-six budget. Public safety, over the past few, uh, years, we've been able to be able to engage and get new apparatuses for firefighters to be able to battle fires, uh, inside the city of Flint. We have four new firefighting apparatuses and other equipment, uh, inside the city of Flint, but also been able to increase wages in that department and also to increase staff. In this budget that's before you, you will see an increase from eighty-four to ninety-five, adding eleven new positions, and also more training opportunities, uh, for that, you know, and also outreach to youth programs, and also being recognized in the state of Michigan, and I wanna give a special shout-out to Vice President Candace Mashat, and also, uh, Council President Dr. Liddell Lewis for spearheading a lot of movement in that civilian space to be able to get smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors into the homes of residents where we can actually save and perfect, uh, the opportunity to save lives in that, and we've been recognized statewide for the, uh, what we've been doing in that area. Also, I wanna recognize Councilman, um, Pfeiffer as it relates to this idea. This idea came up by, uh, a conversation that Councilman Pfeiffer and I had a couple of years ago about making sure that we had medical transport units inside the city of Flint. Right now, the way that it was previously operated inside the thirty-three unit government inside of Genesee County, private companies operated, but when it was reported to me and then also communicated by, to Councilman Pfeiffer, that we were in a critical state each and every day when we woke up because it was not enough ambulances to cover the full Genesee County, that minimum wait times was a half an hour wait, and if you ever had needed a, a medical transport unit for medical emergency, um, heart attacks, uh, strokes, or any other thing, a half an hour can mean a loss of life, and one of the things that we know that we can never recover from is a death deficit. When we lose a life, that life is lost, so we wanted to make sure that we were invested in lifesaving measures, so we bought three ambulances. So with our paramedic training, we are now upping the staffing level in those areas, providing additional training to firefighters to be able to respond. Since we put those operations of medical transport, major medical transport units into position, we have responded to more than twenty-one hundred calls inside the city of Flint. Congratulations, uh, Councilman Pfeiffer for bringing that to attention and also making sure that residents, uh, would have a place to call and nine-one-one would respond to them, and we have more work to do, but this two thousand and twenty-six strong budget recognizes what the priorities is inside the city of Flint, increasing quality of life and also maintaining life, uh, in the event of trouble. And we've just built over one million dollars in services, meaning that the initial investment is yielding more dollars than we actually invested in it. So each one of these units costs around with outfitted with all the tools and technologies that's inside of them, costs about maybe, uh, two hundred grand, uh, in that element. To have these three units, two units are active, one unit's in standby, making sure, uh, that if one unit goes down, we can able, be able to respond, but that's an initial investment of six hundred thousand dollars. We've already eclipsed the initial investment by saving lives and also by four hundred thousand dollars when we're looking at the budget items. Blight elimination is something that we talked about, we always talk about inside the city of Flint. It took us decades to get into the position that we're in, to blight its structures, coming down from a quarter million in population, the structures that we had here that's, this sitting idle and, and will sit there to rot in our communities and illegal dumping, uh, and a disrespect to our home. But now we have expanded staffing and resources, buying equipment, uh, we've done so with the, the, and co, and compliance, and also with, uh, confirmant from the city council to buy the level of equipment that we have. Now we have dump trucks, garbage trucks, backhoes, and all the tools to be able to go out and clean, and Arnold Brown and his team has been doing a fantastic job. In our blight division, we have about fifteen individuals that's out there daily engaging in cleanups every day, but what we have to do as a community and as an elected body, we have to make sure that people respect our home. We can't have people driving in from the out-county area dumping garbage into our community, or those that may live here that's disrespecting our community by dumping. We have engaged in a partnership with Crime Stoppers and All Residents that we put a bounty out for those individuals. You've been here, we forfeited a few vehicles, we've jailed a few individuals, we paid a lot of bounties to make sure our community is free of these individuals that would disrespect our home by dumping garbage. We can clean it up, but we have to clean it up, uh, and keep it clean and not allow people to dump in our community, and we've been doing so. Uh, Chief Green teases me when I say this, that we, we gonna take a hard line, we're not bluffing. We've generated tens of thousands of dollars with our blight court. We have our NSO officers, uh, and we're still working to get more good individuals in that space. We've worked with our NSO officers, they're writing citations and tickets and giving those individuals tickets, uh, for blight violations, and we're cleaning up our city. So we're working very hard and we're using all the resources and revenues that we can to pursue, uh, a cleaner, better, and safer city, and this two thousand and twenty-six budget reflects that. Increase the blight, blight elimination and the mitigation of blight. If you could take a look at the pie, not pie chart, but the scale here, in two thousand and twenty-two, we have increased six times the amount of investment that we are investing in our blight. In this two thousand and twenty-six budget, you see where we were investing about one point two million, or two point two million dollars into the blight elimination, and a lot of those dollars are not just municipal dollars generated from the property tax or income tax, but those are the grants that come in from our federal government and also our state government, uh, to be able to assist us in this area. And one of the things when we talk about having a better city, this is what we talk about, economic growth and economic development, and that's why we are seeing more than a billion dollars of taxable value in our city because people are coming here to relocate personally and also to relocate their business. More than two point five billion dollars of commercial investment has been obligated and committed to the city of Flint, and we could have not done so if we were not working in these areas, and so I wanna give another great shout-out to Arnold Brown, who is over our blight elimination program. Infrastructure and development, last year, we were able to pave more than twenty-eight, uh, twenty-eight miles of road in our city. This strong budget in two thousand and twenty-six continues on that pace. We hear people talking about, uh, the roads and the infrastructure and the sidewalks, uh, that we have inside the city of Flint. Right now, we have our, our pothole patrol teams out there right now, they're patrolling right now the fourth ward, the fifth ward, that was the instruction given this week, they've already did the first ward and the second ward, and, but we have pothole patrol because we have a hotline number that people can call because we don't know where the potholes are automatically. We have to be identif, uh, they have to be identified and also, uh, they have to be, uh, told where, where they are, and then we can go out there and patch them with cold patch, hot patch, but definitely we wanna pave more streets and more roads. Every year, the exercise from council people, and this is how we structured it, and this is how I perfected the opportunity to be able to say that I sat in those seats for about a decade, to say that when you guys recommend a street for repaving, regrading, and, and also building a road back, it takes about a year out. So when you give that recommendation in two thousand and twenty-four, it probably should happen in two thousand and twenty-five or early part of two thousand and twenty-six, based upon the revenues that we have. Other revenues that comes to play when we talk about sidewalk programs and different things of that nature, the fifty-fifty program, this year, I'm happy to say that we introduced a fifty-fifty program, a seventy-five-twenty-five program, and a hundred percent program, using a bouquet of revenue streams to support that activity in those areas. We have a lot of sidewalks, there's a lot of compliance inside the city of Flint, but definitely I need the recommendations and also the dialogue from council to make sure that we perfect this in an organized triage way inside the city of Flint, and in this budget, we will do more than we did last year. Last year, we did twenty-eight miles of road. Street lighting and waste collection, I didn't wanna go too far, let me go back. Street lights is something that we look at every year that we provide, we pay money to our provider, energy provider, which is consumers' energy. In this budget, in two thousand and twenty-six, we want to move to, and upgrade our system. In this budget, you will see money, two point eight million dollars, into replacing all streetlights inside the city of Flint, moving from an inc- street lights inside the city of Flint, moving from an incandescent bulb to a LED bulb, making it brighter and more cost efficient. Also erecting more than three hundred new poles inside the city of Flint. Often we get areas that we say they don't have enough street lighting, but we will definitely in this budget erect three hundred to five hundred new poles inside the city of Flint. The way that we pay for it is gonna pay for itself. Two point eight million dollars is going into this operation of replacing the LED lighting. Currently, right now, we pay about eighty-eight thousand dollars a month to our provider, Consumer Energy, for those street lights. Once the LED lights are engaged and, uh, in the operation, it will take our bill from eighty-eight thousand dollars to about forty-one thousand dollars. The forty-one thousand dollars over aggregate of about maybe seven years or so will repay our system, uh, for the initial investment, but moving forward, we will have a stronger, more lit community. And more lighting, uh, reduces crime and violence in our community as well. So this is a twofold investment, better infrastructure, better lighting, less crime. That's represented in this two thousand twenty-six very, very strong budget. Economic development and growth. When we look at economic development and growth inside the city of Flint, my whole life as I live here, economic disenfranchisement has been pushed on the northern portions of our city, which is predominantly populated by African Americans or minority community. Economic disenfranchisement down the poverty corridor or North Saginaw or, uh, M.L. King, we haven't had much life there. After Buick City closed, we lost about twenty-eight thousand jobs at its heyday. Now we see in that site redeveloped as the picture that you see there is the, uh, the corner of the new building there, there's, that's there, which is Ashley Capital, three hundred million dollar investment. Since that time, they have engaged two new partners, Nanograph with another hundred and twenty-eight million dollar investment, Victory Packaging, another level of investment. And next week, we'll be announcing another partner in that aspect. So we have economic growth, new development and good paying jobs, union, high wage jobs in these areas and economic growth and development in the northern portions of our community. One of the things when we have, uh, a county, when we have thirty-three units of government, they are our neighbors, but we have to view them in a different capacity in some aspects. They're also our competition. When businesses come to the state of Michigan and look at places to land and grow, they can't compare to the city of Flint. We are, we are there. So we have to get over the misnomer of those things that, that held us back. And now we need to move into the area in which we are, where we are Flint Strong. And so when we talk about, when they come into our planning, zoning, licensing, development program, it has to be like a concierge service. It has to make businesses feel welcome to this community and provide them with the necessary tools and resources to be able to develop and grow in our community. This is something that we took on and we developed that. We moved from thirty-five employees to fifty-four time employees in this area to be able to enhance business growth. This two thousand twenty-six budget is taking us way over the top, uh, for, for this level of service and this economic growth, and we're realizing that now with the level of opportunity that we have. And so, and also some of the highlights that we have when we talk about economic growth and development, we want to take our community, at one time, we had about fifty percent of rentership here, fifty percent of the, of people who lived inside the city of Flint were renters, not homeowners. I believe when we talk about traditional wealth, transitional wealth and also owning and have an opportunity to have a level of a good investment, we need to own more things in our community. We've included in this budget down payment assistance for those individuals that want to buy a home in a community that may need a little help to get over it. Uh, ARP, American Rescue Plan, the homeowner repair programs in which we're engaging now, we have other three partners and then also we are engaging this internally now. And also partnering with our public housing sector. Public housing did not only operate the housing structures that you know, but they had scattered housing throughout the community. Those scattered housing, because of financial issues, they have not been maintained to a high level to be able to place people in there. But we've secured grants, uh, in the area to be able to rehab these houses, to be able to put good families into these communities and make it a home for them. Flint is our home, we are Flint Strong. The pension system, the pension fund was the boogeyman for this community. We came here in November of two thousand nineteen, the city of Flint was scheduled to go bankrupt or being solvent in two thousand twenty April. God has blessed us for many opportunities through a way that we constructed, a way for our operational audits to be able to engage this, but our pension system was ballooning and could was ballooning out of control that at this time, it was scheduled to be at a thirty-eight million dollar payment if we had not restructured the way that we pay it, which is more than fifty percent of the revenues, saying that we could not provide a level of service for our residents. However, now, after coming in two thousand nineteen, the pension system being at a twenty-seven percent funded, we are just about sixty-eight percent funded and growing, meaning that every retiree from the city of Flint, the city of Flint can honor the promise to the firefighters and the police officers or the widows of those individuals that those promises that were made are now kept, that we can keep that pension system strong and is moving forward. For all the workers that we have now that's currently in the system, their pension is gonna be there when they retire. That is a commitment that we made as a community. It is our job and it's a great opportunity to be able to say that we are moving forward, making our system stronger, keeping our promises to the residents. And so that is why we should be very proud of this budget. Now we've secured about one hundred and eighty-two million, it's already been placed into the pension system, another eighteen million dollars is on the way and we're in negotiations for the rest of the dollars that was committed through legislative changes in the state of Michigan to be able to get us to this point. We're not the only one that was in this bucket in this, the system. We saw the city of Detroit go through this and the restructuring of their system, but they restructured in a way that was a detriment to the retirees in that city. We've been able to do it without the detrimental effects to those families. We are, we should be very proud of the work that we've done. This two thousand twenty-six strong budget is gonna continue to move forward and make us stronger. Now, we got budget hearings scheduled, you know, um, Madam Chair, uh, they're being scheduled with you and, uh, our Philip Moore, our finance, uh, personnel, and we're gonna be here. We've been looking forward to more questions and engagement, and we'll be looking forward to perfecting this more in a better way. I view you all as partners. You all have, uh, a level of engagement and, and input that we can actually continue to make this budget better and better and stronger. I continue to extend a love of an olive branch in this way. I know what it takes to make a successful community and I congratulate you all because Flint was, was in the ER, it was in ICU, it was on a respirator, but now we're stronger, we're better, and even in this chamber that you sit in now, as you take a look at the new wall and the way that we are and the, the new structure that we have and all the great things that we have in this community, take a bow because we're all in this together and the city of Flint is stronger, better, and this two thousand twenty-six and unprecedented six consecutive balanced budget is now introduced to you. Thank you guys and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your presentation. We appreciate your coming down and, and presenting your vision. Yes?
Um, if it's okay with, uh, Mayor, can we have like a three-minute round? There's only five of us here.
I, I would engage that with a partnership level, let's go with the minute round, uh, because I, you know, we have budget hearings coming up and I want to be able to do that, but I don't want to walk out with your request there left on the table, but I don't want to be staying, I, I will do, I will answer questions, uh, as it pertains to the, the main to this budget as we move forward and I'll do a minute, I'll do a minute round.
One three-minute round?
I, I make that motion.
No, one, one, no, one.
One, one minute round, okay? One, one minute round. Okay, there was a motion on the floor by Mr. Pfeiffer, um, for a one-minute rounded discussion, is there any support? Support? It's been supported by Ms. Burns, roll call Madam Clerk.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter's not in. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Machat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jared is not in. Mr. Alamin is not in. Vote is five yes, zero no.
Vote, vote is five yes, zero no. It's, who would like to have, begin discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Um, thank you for letting us have one minute. So that's not a level of partnership for one. So, um, you mentioned the back taxes, that there potentially was two million dollars, is that an annual number? And are we doing anything to collect on those back taxes or are we just waiting for the state of Michigan to start receiving those?
Well, no, it's, it's annual, right? And so we looked at between two and three million dollars, right? When we did a, we did a snapshot of what we have on our rolls.
So we have planned to collect the back ones, the, the entities that you said weren't registered?
Yes, and it's not, not, not registered, it just weren't paying and yielding the dollars that they owe to the city of Flint in those back taxes and so.
My next question is backwater bills. What are we doing to collect on that? Because that is a monumental number and I got ten seconds.
No, I'm gonna give you a little bit more in that, on that one because it is a big, it's a great question because right now, as we look at it right now, uh, of unpaid water bills, we have a lot of, a lot of water bills are unpaid and I did bring that data sheet here. We talk about unrealized and uncaptured water bills, we have about twenty-seven million dollars in uncollected water bills for active accounts. That means council is still engaged and it's about twenty-seven million dollars and that's just not residential, that's scattered in there, commercial and other entities. And then we have about another fifteen million dollars, uh, in, uh, non-active accounts, right? And so we've been working and working a solution with that forty-two million dollars that's uncollected to the city of Flint, we're working through ways to be able to try to collect that. But one of the important pieces in order to try to collect those dollars, um, is, is very difficult because you can't get, um, as they used to say, you can't get blood from a rock, right? And so we first have to look at our water rate study and then able to try to be able to roll cost of water, the commodity, which I believe is a human right, back and then also be able to sustain and freeze the level of, and the cost of that commodity to residents. But definitely we are still engaging, uh, that each and every week, we're, we're trying to collect from those individuals that we can collect from using the measurements, uh, that's, uh, provided by ordinance inside the city of Flint. But we definitely want to be gentle in some cases and more aggressive in others, but definitely we're working to try to collect that unrealized, uh, dollars that we have on our books, which is forty-two million dollars and we're working very hard to do that. But if you have any recommendations when we go through our budget hearing about how we should, uh, try to be able to recapture those dollars from those residents, uh, inside the city of Flint, we'd be more than open, uh, to entertain that conversation and that dialogue.
Thank you, anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor Neely, for being here. Uh, one minute's not a lot, but one of the things that plagues our community and I did not see, and I have been saying for years, a comprehensive public safety plan with the gang task force. We had someone today, I believe, was shot and we're getting our teenagers and our children shot at an alarming rate. Will we have one, a gang task force? And that should come out, I believe, the chief's budget. My other question is opioid plan. We do not have an opioid plan. We have a mother that's back there and she was here asking for help and it's common. We talk about Fentanyl, which people call it Fentanyl Road because of the drug trafficking, the human trafficking, and women have gone missing and we know that that's a drug alley. So will you be having or will you create a opioid plan? Because I think we've got over six million in opioid money and I don't know how much is still coming.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilman Burns, but you know, and I, I love that question because it gives me opportunity to set the, the record straight on this. Many of the statements that you made may be because you have light information in that category. We do have a crime reduction plan because we have been reducing crime and part of that plan is about, you know, um, the social spaces that we gather in, we have a juvenile crime reduction plan that we've been engaging in, and also we have another engagement plan as it relates to adults. When I talk about taking guns off the streets and out of the hands of those individuals that could be using them, that has been an effective plan with our gun bounty program and also our cold case unit that we have been engaging in and that was been activity and that is displayed in the two thousand twenty-six budget. When we talk about crime reduction and just juvenile ratios, providing young people with opportunities in spaces to be able to be engaged in positive activities. Our engagement in our recast has been definitely one of the bigger things that we've been doing to be able to engage with our partners in those social spaces, to be able to work with those young people, to give them opportunities. Also the job proposal that's currently in front of you as council, taking those kids out of those spaces when they have five additional hours when school is down to be able to have summer jobs and activity as a part of a reduction crime reduction plan that Chief Green and his team has put together, and it is working each and every day. The opioid dollars is just about five million dollars, not six million dollars, but definitely it is being engaged in different activities to be able to help and support activities inside the city of Flint, one being which I just described as the ambulance service that we use those dollars. Thirty percent of those dollars in opioid fund, uh, can be used and digested right into the general fund for general fund operations wherever we deem to see fit as a team, council and administration. Seventy percent goes directly to opioid partnerships. We're looking at partnerships with, uh, organizations that's better suited to be able to engage those spaces, but definitely, definitely we've been buying, uh, Fentanyl, uh, testing scripts, uh, giving those out, you know, I, I, you know, I said people sometimes, they want to get high, they don't want to die, and we've been able to make sure that we can get them to treatment. We've invested monies in, uh, respite programs, uh, also with insight, providing beds for those that's, uh, uh, suffering from the disease of addiction. I believe addiction is a disease and giving them treatment versus drill sentences is very, very, um, a noble thing to do as we use those dollars. So we have those things and it's very much outlined in, uh, the two thousand twenty-six very strong budget that we have, but I would love to be able to see and have that dialogue with you, uh, in a budget hearing to be able to talk about how we can engage more with partnership, uh, uh, helping those families through the level of addiction, those are, those dollars are engaged in. And I wished, I wished when, um, you and I were teenagers, uh, that they had a plan like this, uh, when crack cocaine infested our city and, and exploded in our communities and destroyed some families and some of our friends, but definitely these things are engaged in a social way with our social partners to be able to have, uh, a love of control with those that are suffering from, with the disease of addiction and they are there and definitely we are engaging in those spaces.
Everything he's saying is a lie. He's a liar. I don't get walked out, but it's a lie. That's a lie.
Anyone else? And I am giving grace for, the mayor set the one-minute timeline that he's going over, I'm allowing it to happen. I did, I did, I mean, he went over, you had one minute for your answer, question, answer. Anyone else?
Thank.
Go ahead, Dr. Lewis.
Thank you. Um, so Mayor, again, um, I appreciate you for being here. I appreciate your time, I know that you were diligently to serve the city. And so I'm going back to your statement when you talk about prayer, um, planning and partnership. How do we go about making recommendations? You know, we hear, um, individuals talk to you about a plan, there's a plan that, you know, um, as a co-equal branch of government, it is our responsibility to work with you in that elected mayor or office to come up with a plan, um, for our constituents. And so with that being said, so how do we go about making recommendations for like, say, opioid spending? So if we have questions about it, if we, if we want to know what that looks like, how do we go about planning that with you? If we want to talk about, I, you know, just other issues within your budget, but I'm gonna stick with the opioids, since we do have that set amount of money here, how do we go about engaging in that space with you?
Well, in a more official way, we can engage in a budget hearing to talk about the opportunity to be able to put that plan forth, but I believe each and every one of you who's sitting here today has been down to my office to have dialogue about it. I talked about, uh, Councilman Pfeiffer talking about the ambulance service, Councilman Burns has been down there discussing things, uh, in our office about a six-ward plan for your community, uh, the, the Vice President Candace Machat has been there to talk about fire apparatuses. Uh, Councilman Judy Priestley is there on time every week for our weekly meetings and sometimes I'm not there on time. Uh, and also you, Council President, Dr. Liddell Lewis, uh, we, we can, we, we remain to have an open door policy for all of you in which if you want to engage, make the call, we can have that dialogue. Each and every one of you, uh, has my number and we can engage in this in a positive way, making sure that we can, uh, be able to put the ease, some fears and some anxiety about what it is. And so when we do these great things and I like to say, you know, in this space, we have receipts. We are benefiting now, the residents are benefiting and sometimes you have people that's maybe a little bit hostile about the way they engage or misinformed about some of the things that they have in front of them, but definitely we have to maintain our focus. Uh, we serve in the capacity as what I call enhanced citizens, uh, citizens ourselves, but we're enhanced because we represent other citizens. And sometimes you run into people that may be frustrated about what is going on in their lives or whatever, but we have to be able to perform and, uh, function a partnership and we will maintain that level of communication whenever you want it.
Thank you.
Ms. Machat, do you have anything?
Good evening, Mayor, thank you for joining us. A really quick-
A really quick question, and mine is around the water rates and the fact that there is a resolution before us that we've attempted twice now, and we're trying to avoid that 5.9% rate increase being passed on to residents. But in the interim, that's only going to maybe serve us for about a year. So does your budget address what happens after that year is up? And how do we not pass on that 5.9% rate hike?
Right. In many terms, it's going to be more than 5.9% to the end users, which is each and every one of us, the end users for businesses and residential. This, right, stabilization piece goes into position for this 2026 budget with outlook on 2027, gives us time to be able to reengage the space to be able to negotiate this. In 2017, a contract was signed into position with the Gleewood Water System. That contract was 30 years. Any contract that's 30 years is way beyond any tenure of any elected official that was served. It was a gross lack in critical thinking for them to sign a 30-year deal with an antiquated system, when we had another newer system to be able to provide a level of option for. So just to explain it, when we buy our finished water product from the Gleewood System, and they transmit that water down to us, we buy that water globally. That water costs 5.6% more when we buy it as a finished water product. But however, when we transmission that water to our overall end user, it could very well cost more to that end user, because, just for example, if you in the eighth ward paid your bill, and you in the sixth ward did not pay your bill, the bill payer, as we talked about, the $42 million that's still owed to us, that obligation for the overall global cost for the 6% increase will be borne upon those who are paying inside the system, so the system will not collapse. It is very important for you all to go back, in my opinion, if you have not already reviewed, that's 30-year contract, to take a look at the failures in that contract. If we fail on that contract or payments to the Gleewood System, they take over all of our operations, the whole operation. The residents of the city of Flint will have a government controlling them that's not of them. That's not what we're here for. So we have to put the stabilization pieces in there to be able to maintain a level of freedom to be able to move forward and be able to engage a better way. Thirty-three units of government inside of Genesee County, there's only one unit of government that's still buying water from the Gleewood System. All others are not. The GCDC system, the Kerrigan system, has had consistent rate reductions for their end user. We're the only ones who are facing rate increases. And to have a contract that says that I can increase your rate to make your load heavier, and if you fail, we take you over. Gross lack in critical thinking, a very, very bad engagement, a very, very bad deal to us. Thank God that we finished in 2022, August, that month when that system ruptured. These systems age. When you look at the aging system of the structure of the delivery system of that Gleewood System to us, you will see it's older than 80 years old with a lifespan of no more than 90. And that rupture happened, and it affected 23 communities down of that rupture. Had we not developed and built our secondary delivery system, we would have been in very, very, very big trouble. Thank God we finished that and we developed that. Thank you, members of council, for, you know, putting forth the money. I think that was right before this council. The only one that probably remembers that is Councilman Burns, to see the sort of fight that we had to engage in to be able to get that dollars and be able to get that system up and operational to safeguard our water resources and also the water delivery for our residents. But definitely, that aggregate of 5.6 multiplies and doubles in many different ways. If you go to a restaurant, when they place that free commodity on the table, that glass of water, that free commodity to you at that time costs that service provider 6% more. Maybe they put it into, you know, the growth of a cost on the menu somewhere. So you, as an end user at home, you pay more. You, when you go out to a business in the city, you have to pay more to be able to adjust for that increase. So stabilization dollars are very, very important, and you can ask any resident inside the city of Flint, they always say, we don't want to pay more. And we have the dollars now to be able to put into a stabilization, into our water fund, to stabilize this and for all of us to get to the table and figure out a way to reverse water rates inside the city of Flint. I believe water is a human right. I believe costs are too high, but we have to figure out a way to be able to engage this in a better space. And I think Councilman Burns was, you were there with us when we developed the water rate estimator, and talking about and how to develop the cost and let people understand the cost of what the infrastructure costs us and the cost of water to the end user. And so we need to roll that back.
Thank you. So I'm gonna wait for my questions for the budget hearings, because they're more individualized. And I want to appreciate, I want to thank you for your time, and I will close out this special order.
Thank you, and I look forward to our partnership moving forward. God bless you guys.
It's now time for, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, for the public hearing. The public hearing is, is limited to, I'm sorry, I can't remember. Is that two or three minutes? Three minutes. There's no signing up for any discussion on the public hearing. Please limit your discussion to the budget. If you discuss anything else, you will be asked to relinquish your time.
Hello, I'm R.L. Mitchell. To respond on Flint Strong and the county's strong, Flint County's strong. And thank God for Mrs. Mashak, Candace Mashak, for going, that was the proof of showing that Flint is strong by going and get the public, the lady did come back while she got on the elevator, and the eighth ward turns in and called to get the fifth ward back for breaking up the form, because there wouldn't be no Flint Strong if it wasn't for them two council persons, because there wouldn't be no meeting here tonight. And just like in the days of America down south, you heard what the lady say, and the mayor said something, and she said that's a lie, then she put herself out, because
Mr. Mitchell.
Down south.
Mr. Mitchell, please, you will have an opportunity to speak on this at another point. This is just for the budget, please.
Oh, the budget?
The budget only.
Oh, the budget is raising Flint water bill higher than it's supposed to be, because if we don't pay the water bill, what the mayor said, they're gonna take over, the government will take over Flint, not just the water, take over, martial law over the whole city. That's how America rolls, South America rolls down south, and bringing that down-south stuff up to Flint. Because if a woman talking about them ambulance service, talking about, we got them, the fireman just got the ambulance service, but he don't go out there in Flint Township, and the black woman always gonna, she'd rather kill her own babies to keep the public from killing them down south, and then when they do, they're blaming on the black woman, because they look all appalled that the black woman killed their own black boy babies, and it's still going on in America right now, and nobody addressing, but.
Mr. Mitchell.
Ms. Burns addressing it, and nobody, your time ran out, wasn't it?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes. I've got plenty of time, because it's unlimited.
Budget only, please.
Budget only, like they undertook our stimulus money, using it for the water bill and getting certain people, but I take that back. I went to the arrest yesterday, but I was told, I had a bomb in my pocket. He said, you got anything on you?
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell.
Can they say I was?
Mr. Mitchell, please sit down. Your time is over.
Wow, I get it.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on the budget? Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Hearing none? This ends the public hearing on the budget. It's now time for public comment. Members who wish to, members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. Box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collections of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaking during public comment, with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. Madam Clerk, who is our first speaker?
First speaker is R.L. Mitchell.
Any topic now, Mr. Mitchell, any topic.
Like I said, my name is R.L. Mitchell. I live on the north side of Flint, 759 East London Avenue, and like I was saying, oh, you see, the woman was concerned about that opioid dope situation we got in Flint, and nobody can do nothing about it. And nobody seemed to know, like it was all over America, all over the world, but when they put it on Front Street, you decided to put the mayor in front of the public, and they talk, and they get out of here, like they still ain't, they showing you that they ain't concerned about, we the citizen. They get out, they say their stuff, and get out, and you back them up, talking about, you gonna, you will deal with the rest of it, Ms. Priestley? Because you got the money, but you gonna make sure the mayor go down, and she called the mayor a lie, and you gonna say, that's all right, Mr. Mayor, I'll take care of it. And you say, they couldn't wait to get out of here, see? And whoever that was sitting beside them and all that, all that, Madam Judge or whatever she was, and all that stuff. But, and another thing, about this situation about black families, but they said that's it's all families, about that dope situation dying, but particularly the black family, because, well, that's a racial. They said Flint is all black, but a whole lot of brown peoples in here too, Mexicans and all that stuff, but they out there dying on that opioid stuff too. But the woman, only woman spoke up in Flint, she left Flint because she didn't want to see her kids die, went out to Flint Township, and the fireman, like they don't, on philosophy, killed them two Mitchell boys in there. They don't want to deal with that, and they going, doing the same thing now, but not addressing the situation, like Ed Teller and Mr. Moore. Someone come back, like he talking that generous Chinese talk like nobody can understand. He come back in here, and Ed Teller, wait, all that, and people act like they don't want to. And you see, one person get up and break the forum up right now while people's trying to talk, but again, Ms. Mashak, thank you for speaking up, didn't give a, your forum was broke, but nobody wanted to call it, but that's because really Flint Strong, you and Ward Eight Tarzan, only one got an electric car in the building, and, and another thing, I thought you was gonna give me a ride the other night, but James Bond disappeared in the, but I see, only thing important that you came back in one piece. James Bond always come back in one piece. Look at him, over there curious, and the rooster up, the city hall up. Madam Chair, are you listening? Hello? Hello?
Next public speaker.
The next speaker is LaCia Williams. Okay, not in. And the final speaker for this meeting is James Moore.
Once again, James Moore from the second ward. I hope you guys can hear me. Can we just, I got three minutes. Can we just make it, somebody up there to make it kind of understandable? In the city of Flint, we all feel that the water rates are very high. A lot of us wish that they would come down. Can we find some medium ground? I mean, between zero and 10, we should be at least come together on five and figure out something. It's like you, I don't want the state to come in and take over the water, because, hell, we know what that happened with the emergency managers. We just need to make it more understandable for the people of the city of Flint, and maybe then some water bills will get paid. Didn't take that long. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. That's the end of public speaking. And council members will have two minutes to respond to members of the public. Is there anyone who wishes to take that time?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And to the public speakers and for those who stay, we were granted one minute. Literally one minute. And our community faces more than one-minute issues. That's just a fact. And so when we say we want transparency, then we're transparent, and we open up for dialogue, because there are, there are some issues. And the public has a good reason to not trust anyone, because the public was told the water was okay for 18 months, we're going on 11 years, and all service lines and restorations are not complete. And so, to me, you have to have, if you want us all to trust and not everything behind closed doors, today was civil, and let's have some dialogue, so that we can see that the mayor is working with the council. No one was disrespectful. There's questions about opioids, serious questions. And I don't like doing everything, because the public needs to know. You know, and we talk about the public safety plan, comprehensive, and we still have, this past weekend, we had three people shot, I think at Riker Manor. I think two, one fatal, two critical. We had someone today. And so when we talk about, one thing I will say, Hurley Hospital is very good at saving lives now, because they have had so many gunshot victims. And that, to me, is something we have to still talk about. And our young people, we do not have a gang task force. They don't care about a gun by bat. They could care less. Them guns on the street, they get ghost guns, straw guns, they don't care. And that, to me, I must still say, we need a comprehensive public safety plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else on council? Seeing none, that ends council response.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so I did have a comment, but since you closed it out, I wasn't quick enough. Go ahead, it's fine.
Without objection, I allow you to do public comment. Any objection?
I object.
Okay. All right, so go ahead, Ms. Dr. Lewis, you had the floor. We're not doing the council response, but did you have anything else that you wanted? Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Motion on the floor to adjourn by Mr. Pfeiffer, sir, support?
Support.
It's been supported by Ms. Burns. Roll call.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Jarrett is absent. Mr. Alameen is absent. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
And vote is five yes, zero no?
The vote is five yes, zero no. This meeting is adjourned at 6:54.